Two minutes warning. Silent your phones, silent your phones if you haven't already. Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Fort Wayne Community School Board of Trustees. We begin each meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Would please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And just as a reminder, you know, we are still following the social distancing guidelines. So for the capacity of this room is, I don't know, what is this, about 20, 25? So you can view the meeting, of course, on Comcast 54 or Frontier 24. The live stream is available on our Facebook page. And it is on our LTV 2454 Fort Wayne Community School YouTube channel. So lots of ways to watch. We'll begin with roll call of members.
Good evening, Steve Corona from the 5th District.
Good evening, Glenna Yale, 2nd District.
Tom Smith, 3rd District.
Maria Norman, Member at Large.
Anne Duff, Member at Large.
Raleigh Booker, 4th District.
And I'm Julie Hollingsworth, elected from District 1. And with us tonight, of course, is the Clerk of the Board Angie Fuller. Good evening. And our Superintendent Dr. Mark Daniel.
Good evening.
Good evening. So we begin then with, well, first item is awards and recognition. And we are going to introduce the Teacher of the Year finalists and then the Fort Wayne Community School Teachers of the Year. And this is for the 2021 school year. But first, we have a video to show. So I think we lost some audio there on the ELL student, but maybe we can get that fixed up. Do we put that on the Fort Wayne Community School website? Okay, great. Okay. And of course, we put that video together because in the season of COVID, we were unable to have our usual reception before the board meeting. So thanks for putting the video together. So each year, Fort Wayne Community Schools request nominations from principals for the Teacher of the Year recognition. In the spring of 2020, Fort Wayne Community Schools received a record number of submissions for the honor. The Teacher of the Year Committee reviewed 49 applications and narrowed them down to eight finalists, who were then interviewed by the committee, and two were chosen as the 2021 Fort Wayne Community School Teacher of the Year winners. So at this time, we would like to formally recognize the finalists for their hard work and dedication to the students of Fort Wayne Community Schools. So if you come forward as your name is read and get your gift from Dr. Daniel. Angela Guerin, who's a 2nd grade teacher at Adams Elementary School. Megan Rusk. And go ahead and stay up here because then we, yeah, because we want a cookie. Because we're going to get a picture then. So Megan Rusk is a 5th grade teacher at Lincoln Elementary School. Ashley Toy, an art teacher at Toll's Intermediate School. Catherine Frisk, a 6th grade language arts teacher at Memorial Park Middle School. Jennifer Sloan, an art teacher at Southside High School, who I believe is unable to be here. And Julie Haddaway, business teacher at Wayne High School. So congratulations. We'll get a couple pictures. Dr. Daniel, if you want to step in the... So we can close in a little bit. I don't know, are you allowed to take a mask off picture if you hold your breath?
He promised not to breathe on anybody.
Principals? Not enough room for them, okay.
So now it's recommended that the board recognize Indian Village Elementary School teacher Deborah Han and Northrup High School teacher Lisa Clegg as the district's 2021 Teacher of the Year winners. As you heard, Fort Wayne Community Schools received 49 admissions last spring. After interviews, interviewing the top eight, the district chose two winners, which speaks volumes about their incredible work that the teachers of this district do every single day. So Deborah Han, and which one is Deborah? Deborah Han is a 3rd grade teacher at Indian Village Elementary School. Mrs. Han has taught for 25 years and has been with Indian Village for the past five. During her time there, she has revived the school's annual science fair and started a robotics club. Cool. According to Indian Village Principal Kara Miller, and is Kara here? Okay. "The passionate energy she exudes to help her students learn and grow is contagious. Mrs. Han tailors her classroom so that it is an engaging learning environment for each and every student." Mrs. Han said her focus in teaching is first getting to know her students and building a relationship with each of them. She says, "While there are many ways to reach a learner, it is my responsibility to understand which approach works with each child." And the co-Fort Wayne Community School Teacher of the Year is Lisa Clegg. She is an English Language Learners teacher at Northrup High School. Ms. Clegg has taught for eight years and has been at Northrup for two years. Mrs. Clegg's philosophy can be summed up in a few short words. Love, students, teach, all of them. In her classroom, building community is a key part of reaching her students who come from 28 countries and speak more than 30 different languages. Northrup Principal Erica Almas said, "When I think of the qualities of a Teacher of the Year candidate, an unwavering drive for student success is one of the first characteristics that comes to mind." And Lisa embodies this. Her dedication and can-do attitude will continue to have a positive impact on our students and staff." So congratulations to both Lisa Clegg and Deborah Han as the 2021 Fort Wayne Community School Teacher of the Year. Go ahead, scoot in a little bit.
I was smiling when you came.
Does anyone have any words of wisdom for us they would like to share? Or you just want to get out of here and relax tonight? So congratulations to everyone. And, you know, this is just a, I'm sure the committee had a tough job. Anyone else who, you will not hurt our feelings at all if you leave because I know what busy, including principals, because I know what busy lives you have. So thank you and congratulations. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, so moving on to business. First, we have the consent agenda. And these are items that come to us every meeting. They include the minutes from our last meeting held September 14, right here. Vouchers and payroll approval, vouchers for the period ending September 28, and payroll for the periods ending, okay, thanks Steve, thanks Glenna. So all those in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And Dr. Daniel, was there anything on the personnel report that you wanted to highlight?
I am pleased to report that 98% of our teachers are in their positions as they should be, which if you look at that as a statewide phenomenon, I'm very pleased. And we're still working to fill some of those unique, those unique positions in the special ed area and some of our related technology areas. So again, very pleased though, 98% placement.
Very good.
How about, I think it was the last meeting you mentioned having 40 applicants for bus driver positions. Have any of them been successfully hired in driving, three?
So far, three.
Okay, great, great. What's that?
Yeah, we hired two more in the pipeline, so.
Great.
Only 55 go.
So if anyone wants a bus driving job, they are out there.
That's right. And good health care.
Yes.
Okay, so we have no old business, so that brings us to new business. And the first is appointment of project architect engineers for 2021 construction projects. Recommended that the board approve the appointment of a project architect engineer for the following projects. There are site improvements at Haley Elementary School. There are locker replacement projects all over evidently. There are facilities, building ADA or accessibility improvements. There are, of course, roofing replacements, 2021 flooring replacements, and then general building systems, site and traffic, Adams Elementary unit ventilators, and mechanical and electrical audiovisual and field lighting. And members, you can see all of the architects, engineers that are recommended. The design or contact fee and then the estimated construction budget, which ranges from about $170,000 to almost $3 million. So do we have a motion in a second?
So move.
Second.
Okay, thanks Tom, thanks Raleigh. Any questions? Okay, all those in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, whoa, 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 whoa. Okay, now we'll have to, I forgot, there's page two. So there's also Northrup High School West Site improvements, Wayne High School Stadium waterproofing and lighting improvements at Fairfield and Shambo Elementary, and the 2021 Northside High School softball field improvements. And those architects and engineers are listed there, as well as the fees and construction budget. So do we have a motion in a second for these four?
I move approval for these four as well.
Second.
Thanks Glenna, thanks Anne. Questions? Okay, so all those in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now we have change orders. And this is two pages of change orders. It's recommended that the board approve the following change orders. Some of these are 2020 capital project plan projects. Some are from the 2016 bond issue. Some are from the 2019 general obligation bond and nutrition services projects. So I'm not going to read all of them, but there's the original contract amount. And then there is the addition or deduction, which I believe, oh, there's one addition to, two additions mostly deductions for an overall contract amount of, the original contract amount was $9,149,165. The changes are a deduction of $59,296.99. And that's about less than a 1% change. So. Questions will be addressed by Director of Facilities Darren Hess. Do we have a motion in a second?
So move.
Second.
Thanks Steve, thanks Maria. Any questions?
Good report. I mean, we can get a little money back.
Exactly. Right. We must be doing a good job bidding also.
Great.
Okay, all those in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we have the 2021 Perkins CTE COVID-19 Assistance Grant. It's recommended that the board approve the Perkins CTE COVID-19 Assistance Grant, application for an acceptance of, in the amount of $53,556 from the Indiana Department of Education and Governor's Workforce Cabinet. So this grant is federal funding allocated to the Fort Wayne Community School Career Academy at Anthes by the state of Indiana. Funds from this grant will allow the continuation of a range of services for the benefit of over 1,000 career and technical education students in Allen County. The funds in this grant are for COVID-19 testing for work-based learning students, necessary PPE, substitute teacher pay to cover classroom supervision for medically vulnerable staff, instructional materials, supplies, equipment upgrades to allow for virtual instruction demonstrations, and textbooks to allow blending learning services. Wow, we can get all that for about $53 per student? Impressive. This non-competitive grant was written by Jesse Webb, Director of the Career and Technical Education Area 14. Fort Wayne Community Schools is the fiscal agent for these funds, and there is no requirement to match the grant with local funds. This grant supports District Goal One, achieve and maintain academic excellence. And the Principal of Career Academy at Anthes, Jesse Webb, who is here to answer any questions. Do we have a motion in a second?
So move.
Second.
Thanks Steve, thanks Maria. Questions? So Jesse, can we get everything listed on here for $53 a student?
We'll use that.
What's the main target?
The main purpose? It was a grant that was basically given by the state. We really didn't apply for it, it was just given. So we will use that probably for some PPE for certain programs and to pay for substitutes that are needed, especially in our CNA program most likely, so they can be in clinical in the spring.
So I'm curious, it says part of it would be COVID-19 testing for work-based learning students, so.
So if they had to, if they had to test for, take a, the COVID test, we could pay for that out of this assistance fund.
So that's kind of a requirement of, from the workplace that those students are placed in?
Just depends on what company, if the company provide or needs that testing.
Okay, great. Any other questions?
And then the 1,000 students that are in the career and technical education in Allen County, these are not all Fort Wayne Community Schools students?
Correct. Currently at the Career Academy, we have about 840. Our attendance is down a little bit due to pandemic. But we also serve non-managed Fort Wayne Community Schools as well. So we have a number of students that are in all the high schools taking CTE courses as well.
Does the Career Academy, I assume they are also doing the blended?
We are doing the blended, yes.
So they're actually, you know, either the Monday, Thursday, or the Wednesday, Friday, and, okay.
Correct. Just because of the hands-on requirements that are provided, that are needed for some of the certifications and dual credits, we have to provide that.
And I've seen a lot of pictures posted, you know, from, for things that the students are doing at the Career Academy. I've seen those on Facebook, I always enjoy that. I'm curious, you know, I normally, normally like the construction trade groups builds a house every year, but I'm just wondering if they're doing smaller projects because they can't have the full crew there.
This year, we decided that we weren't going to pursue a student house because the last two have been within about a 20, 30 minute drive out on the, outside of Fort Wayne. So we decided we wanted to focus on jobs that were a little bit closer. So we're working with Habitat for Humanity and some other programs here in town that we can do kind of closer projects for and serve the community.
Okay, great. Any other questions? Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now we have the public hearing on the 2021 Budget Capital Projects Plan and the School Bus Replacement Plan. A public budget presentation was made at the September 14, 2020 Board of School Trustees Meeting. All board adopted funds and proposed budgets were discussed and estimated tax rates were reviewed. The notice for the Capital Projects Plan and the Bus Replacement Plan were properly advertised on September 14, 2020 on Indiana Gateway and the Fort Wayne Community School website. According to Indiana law, the school corporation must conduct a public hearing on the budgets, the three-year capital projects plan and the five years of the bus replacement plan of the Board of School Trustees. The intent of the hearing is to allow board members the opportunity to receive community input. Board members will be asked to vote on these items on October 12, 2020. So we now open the public hearing for the public to address the board regarding the 2021 budgets, the 21 to 23 Capital Projects Plan, and the 21 to 25 School Bus Replacement Plan. Microphone is open. If anyone wishes to, I don't know, are you getting interesting questions on Facebook, Krista? Last call. Okay, so seeing no one, do we have a motion, second, close the public hearing?
So move.
Second.
Thanks Tom, thanks Maria. All those in favor of closing this public hearing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now we have purchase of property next to the Scott Academy. It's recommended that the board authorize the purchase of the following properties located near Scott Academy. 5212 Gaywood Drive, two appraisals, and the purchase price is right between that for $52,500. And 5214 Gaywood Drive, right next door, and two appraisals and purchase price a little bit lower, $50,500. Purchase of property on this block will allow flexibility for the school to create a parent pickup lane and additional parking. Funding for this purchase will be from the 2016 school building, basic renewal restoration and safety project, so this 2016 bond issue. And questions will be addressed by Director of Facilities Darren Hess. And you have a nice map on the back which shows you where the property is. So Darren, houses on these or not?
Yes, each one has a home on it.
And what are we going to do with those?
We go through the process of abating all the hazardous materials and then demoing them and readying the land for improvements.
And, you know, I'm curious, what's this little separate building that's detached from Scott?
That's the four classroom modular unit that will be removed after the project.
So that'll be gone because in this next bond project that we're going to add on to classrooms to Scott, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Okay, I was wondering what that was. Any other questions?
Is there a timeline for the proposed parent pickup lane or?
It won't be right away. We're still waiting to acquire additional properties hopefully. So that will change how the layout of that will be. And also, we want to support the expansion project, so it's a few years away yet.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thanks Darren. Do we have a motion in a second?
So move. Second.
Thanks Glenna, thanks Anne. So all those in favor of purchasing these two properties signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so now we have. Southside High School Temperature Controls Upgrades. It's recommended that the board approve the following contract for upgrades to temperature control systems at Southside High School. So from Automated Logic, the controls base bid is $557,156. The project consists of upgrades to the building automation control systems at Southside High School. The existing control systems are proprietary, and Automatic Logic is the single-source vendor for this work. The funding for the project will be from the 2020 bond project. Work is anticipated to be substantially complete by July 30th, 2021. And Darren is still available to answer any questions. Do we have a motion in a second?
So moved. Second.
Thanks Ann. Thanks Maria. Questions?
So this is the first project from the 2020 fund?
Yes, this will be our first contract approved.
Okay. Great, thank you.
When was Southside renovated?
1994, '95.
That's right. So this is replacing those controls that were put in at that time?
Correct.
Okay.
100 years next year? Is that right? The building is a 2021?
I believe it's 2021.
Southside?
Yeah.
100 years. I was not on the board when it was built.
Hey, we'll take your word for it, Steve. Any other questions? Thanks Darren. Okay, all those in favor of approval of the Southside project signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and last we have workers' compensation third-party administrator. It's recommended that the board approve an agreement with JWF Specialty Company as the third-party administrator for the Fort Wayne Community School Workers Compensation Program for a four-year term beginning October 1st, 2020. JWF specializes in the administration of education and municipality benefit programs. Their clients include some of Indiana's largest employers and public school districts. JWF has been the TPA for Fort Wayne Community Schools since 2012 and has exceeded expectations on claim handling processes and reporting capabilities. Questions will be answered by Ashley Pittson, Manager of Compensation and Benefits. Do we have a motion in a second?
So moved.
So good.
Thanks Maria. Thanks Steve. Questions?
It's always good to read something like, about a company that we do business with and the information we get says they've exceeded expectations. So it's, it's not a company we want to stay in business with.
Exactly. Okay. All those in favor of approval of this agreement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So that is the close of our business. We don't have any reports. Next meeting is Monday, October 12th. Don't forget also, board members, to put on your calendar our executive session on, is that October 21st?
Yes.
5 o'clock?
Yes.
Right here? Okay. So, board member comments? Steve?
No comments this evening, thank you.
No comments from myself either.
I have nothing either.
No comment.
On this Wednesday, the 30th, at 6:30, there is a, this is Zoom panel discussion. It's about the privatization of public schools. And it's actually part of the panel you're supposed to watch, Backpack Full of Cash, which is about obviously the privatization of public education. And, but I believe it's too late at this point to get the free code to watch the film right now. But the, I believe the panel discussion will be very relevant anyway without having seen the film. And I know that it was shown a couple years ago here at, I believe, Ivy Tech. So some of you may have already seen that anyway. But the panel will include Dr. Jennifer McCormick, our Superintendent of Public Instruction, and then two members from ICPE, the Indiana Coalition of Public Education, Downtonia Bates and Kathy Fuentes-Ror, who are both very strong public education advocates and involved in advocating for our schools for many years. Have spoken with legislators and talked to the public about the effects of privatization and how that has such an impact on our most vulnerable children. So I think the panel discussion will be very interesting. If you search on Facebook for Backpack Full of Cash, you could probably find that event. And then there's a link to join the Zoom meeting with the panelists.
Thanks for that reminder, Ian. Raleigh?
No comment.
Okay. Dr. Daniel, anything you've had?
Similar to Ann, I just want to remind people that on October 6th, that's Tuesday, October 6th, we'll have another Facebook Live with FWCS. So it's a chance for our parents to engage in a session that we've had a couple of times, but we think we need to continue those. So that will be on next, again, next Tuesday, October 6th, starting at 5:45 or roughly 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. We also have something coming up on October 1st as well, and that's a crucial conversations that we're having with students. And that was with, Fay Robbins will be leading that. But again, conversations with our students regarding what they're experiencing this year because the remote learning phenomenon and hopefully listening and gathering some input so we can make necessary adjustments to better the programming. So again, I want to thank Fay for that and also for Krista for setting up the live session with our parents.
How did you choose the students for the crucial conversations?
Fay, you want to?
We have been working with Jeff Roberts, who has a group called Pave the Path. And so there were students that he has had, and then we've asked some other students whose parents actually were involved in some conversations this summer and were interested in wanting their students to, their students were feeling a little anxious about starting school. And so they came and requested if we could do something. And so we began working with Jeff. Most of the students are from his organization, Pave the Path.
Great, thank you.
Great, thank you.
That's all I have.
What's that?
That's all I have.
Well, and those are, I think those are two really important things. I think parents and now hopefully students are, you know, appreciative that, that we are listening to them, which is important. We got an email the other day, and if you recall, I believe we're going to have our first esports team in Fort Wayne Community Schools. Is that correct? At Snyder High School?
Right. I believe we've had it as a club. So it's now continues to evolve. So I believe tomorrow afternoon, they're actually going to have introduction. So Krista, I believe, is going to be attending that as well. But again, times are
Yeah.
are changing, and the e-gaming phenomenon across the country is continuing to expand and grow. And I wouldn't be surprised if it doesn't become, if IHSA doesn't see it as a sport, and then we'll have to consider programs for future programs.
Yeah, that's interesting.
Yeah.
So it's, for any board members who want to check it out tomorrow, I believe, I'm correct, 5 o'clock at Snyder High School. And where is that? You know, it's a big building. So.
I'm sure they will direct you.
Okay. Okay, because I might have to check that out. So that'll be interesting.
If I could add, a couple of years ago, there was an article in the national publication. I'll have to dig it out. But there was a young man profiled on the front page of the Wall Street Journal or New York Times from our city. And at that time, he was making over $125,000 as an esports athlete.
I was just going to say, I knew there were, I knew there were professionals.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's, if you're good, it's big money.
It's in room D 150.
It's where E?
D as in David.
D. D as in David.
D?
150.
150, okay. Thank you. Okay, cool. And of course, congratulations to our, not only the Teacher of the Year finalists for this year, but the two winners. And just a reminder, you know, thank you to all of our teachers. This is an interesting year, a year unlike any other. I know that, I think we've acknowledged this before, that it, that every one of us is a learner this year. You know, administrators, teachers, parents, students. So just thank you to teachers for, you know, what you do for students every day. We'd like to say it with giving all of you a dozen Cookie Cottage cookies, but I guess you'll just have to accept our thanks in lieu of those. But we do, we do appreciate what you do every, every day. I know I've, I've made a point not to visit any schools this year because I just haven't done it yet because I just don't want to bother anyone. I might do some, you know, second semester, but I just, you know, I don't want to be a distraction to the important work that's, that's going on in our schools every day. So again, thank you. So.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and the microphone is open, so if anyone can get this.